Alright, for another episode here from Lakeway Audits. Today is Monday, February the 15th, 2021. It is approximately 5:15 PM. It's raining out, so gonna stay in the truck and do this, which is okay. Because what I want to do today is I want to read over some of the requests that I got um from the Hamlin County School Board. I was gonna do the school board and the transportation all in one, but um I received a um a notice from the schools that were sent out to all the kids. So, we're gonna go ahead and make it two separate parts. There won't, it'll won't be a part one and part two, it'd just be two separate ones. One will be the uh school board, the next one will be Hamlin County um Board of Education. I will read, they will both go updated or uploaded this evening. So first I want to read this letter to you. It's not a letter, it's the um mission statement of the Hamlin County School Transportation Department, which is located at 462 Snyder Drive, Morristown, Tennessee. The phone number is 423-586-2103. It says, "safely transporting your children today to ensure their tomorrow." The goal for Hamlin County Schools is for the student to have an enjoyable and safe ride to and from school all throughout the year. In the past years, we have updated all buses with safety features that include crossing arms. These keep your child 10 feet from the front of the bus so that the driver can see them cross in front of the bus at all times, which is a very good thing that they've um they've done. Schools um around the country have done that for many years. Video and camera systems, child reminders. Drivers must walk to the rear of the bus to disable the back door and check to see that no student, no child is left on the bus. And backup alarms. All buses are equipped with phone systems in case of an emergency. All Hamlin County School Bus Drivers participate in in in-service activities and are required to attend a state-sponsored training class for four hours per year. Our goal is to have highly qualified drivers in the safest equipment possible. And then it says to find your schools, um the Hamlin County Department of Education Transportation Department is dedicated to Hamlin County students and families. We strive to offer the safest and best quality transportation possible and desire open lines of communication. Our office is open from 8 AM to 5 PM, Monday through Friday. So, on here, under, under mission statement, it says that they want to have an enjoyable and safe ride to and from school for the students. Well, on bus 34 in particular, and I don't know about the other buses. If your kids ride any of the other buses, please comment below. I'd like to know whether or not you uh your student on their bus is allowed to speak or not. On bus 34, they are not allowed to speak at all. Now, I find that a little ridiculous that they're not allowed to speak on the bus. The rules set forth do not state that there is no talking on the bus. It only states that students must remain quiet, that there's no yelling, and we're gonna read that to you. So next what I have is something that I printed off of their website. And it is "School Bus Safety Tips for Students and Parents." Now, this was just added within the past two weeks to their website. There was only two links prior to, and one was the school bus rules, and the other one was "School Bus Rider Rules and Regulations." So, they've gone ahead and they've added this, which comes directly from the Tennessee Department of Education. And I'm gonna read that to you. "School Bus Safety Tips for Students and Parents." The bus stop tips. Arrive at the bus stop five minutes prior to your bus arrival. Wait at least 10 feet from the roadway if possible. There should be no horseplay, running, or pushing at the bus stop. Look for and remove any strings or other hanging items from jackets and backpacks as they could be caught in the bus door. Never attempt to pick up anything dropped near the wheels, under the bus, or in front of the bus. Tell the driver they will help you. You don't want the driver to lose sight of you in the danger zone. Have everything you carry in a backpack or bag so you will not drop things along the way. Those five rules are awesome, they're great, and they should be there, and they should be enforced. Loading and unloading, the danger zone, which um has, they have a little diagram there. It says, "The danger zone is a 10-foot area on all sides of the bus where children are in most danger of being hit, whether by another vehicle or their own bus." When explaining this to younger children, you may want to say five big steps instead of 10 feet to help them understand the danger zone. Make sure your driver can see you at all times. Reminder, I see the driver, the driver sees me. And then they've got some tips. And then it says, "If the driver honks the horn, it's to alert you of danger. Stop and look for danger, then look to the driver for further directions." Next, riding the bus. Be respectful. Greet each other. Follow adult directions. Keep hands, feet, and things to yourself, and clean up after yourself. Use an appropriate voice. Quiet conversation voice, kind words, school-appropriate language. No talking at railroad track stops. Now, this is coming from the Tennessee Department of Education, okay? This is a state law, these are state rules. These rules supersede local government rules. So it's stating here that talking is allowed, it just must be quiet and kind words with school-appropriate language. It does only state that there is no talking at railroad track stops, which is also what is included in the rules and regulations of from the Hamlin County Department of Education. It says, "Stay safe. Find your seat quickly and stay seated while the bus is moving. Sit safely, i.e. seat to the front, um back on the back, and feet or on or toward the floor. Keep the aisle areas clear. Keep everything, including hands, head, and trash, inside the bus and not out the windows." Now it gives some parent tips. So all those are great, the only one we're really focusing on is the no talking one. So, from Hamlin County on their website, it says, "Follow these bus rules. The bus driver may assign seats. Be courteous. No profanity. Do not eat or drink on the bus, keep the bus clean. Violence is prohibited. Remain seated. No smoking. And keep your hands and head inside the bus. Do not destroy property. For your own safety, do not distract the driver through misbehavior." Misbehavior on the bus. Penalty, at discretion of the principal, depending on the circumstances, may include removal from the bus for one to 10 days or permanent removal from the bus by a formal hearing. Serious misbehavior on the bus may also be caused for permanent up-to-in-including suspension or expulsion from the bus. Prior, now this is also on their website, and this is the "School Bus Rider Rules and Regulations." Now, I don't know which form of these is actually posted on the school bus, but it says, and I'm not gonna say, read the prior to loading or the after leaving the bus, okay? Because that right there um is gonna be the, pretty much the same as what I've already read. But it says, "For on the bus, the bus driver is in charge. Insubordination will not be tolerated. The bus driver is authorized to assign seats and require all students to be quiet. Loud talking, laughter, or unnecessary confusion diverts the driver's attention and may result in an accident." So right here, it's stating that the bus driver is only authorized to require the students to be quiet, which equals loud talking, laughter, or unnecessary confusions. Okay, so as long as they are doing and talking as is stated from the Tennessee Department of Education, that talking is okay. Quiet conversation, kind words, and school-appropriate language. So that is what we're talking about. And in my response from my records request, it states on there that the bus driver is allowed to keep them quiet, we will read that. So, "The bus is an extension of the classroom and students must follow the same rules as in the classroom." Same rules, they're allowed to speak in the classroom. Maybe not all the time, but they are. "The bus is an extension of the classroom and students must follow the same rules as in the classroom. No eating, drinking, gum chewing is allowed on the bus. Profanity, tobacco products, e-cigarettes, drugs, alcohol, weapons, and sexual behavior will not be tolerated. Bullying, intimidation, or harassment of any kind will not be tolerated. No cell phones or cameras can be used while on the bus. Taking pictures of other students or downloading obscene pictures or videos will not be tolerated." Note, "The Hamlin County Department of Education Student Dress Code shall be enforced on the bus. Take your seat and stay there. Moving around can be dangerous to you and to others. Bus seats are designed for three people. If necessary, share your seat with at least two other people. Face the front. You can get hurt more easily during a sudden stop if you are facing the rear. Keep your hands and feet, keep your hands and head inside the bus at all times. Do not throw items in the bus or out of the bus windows. Help keep the bus clean and safe at all times. Vandalism will be dealt with in accordance with discipline procedures, and the offenders must pay for damage to the seats. Do not tamper with the bus or any other of its equipment. Keep all personal belongings, coats, books, musical instruments, etc., in your lap and seat areas. Keep the aisles clear. Due to allergies and asthma reactions, do not spray substances of any type, including perfumes or hand sanitizers. Do not carry hazardous material, oversized project, animals, or insects on the bus. Be absolutely quiet when the bus approaches a railroad crossing." Okay, so here we are again. The only time it states no talking or to be absolutely quiet is when the bus approaches a railroad crossing. That's the same thing from the state of Tennessee, and that is the same thing in the Hamlin County School Board. So, it's only no talking when you approach a railroad crossing. Other than that, your First Amendment right of speech and the ability to have speech is being taken from your students, okay? They are allowed to speak on the bus as long as they are not loud talking, loud laughter, or inappropriate language. That is what we're discussing, that is one of the focuses, just one of the focuses. Um, "During emergencies, remain calm and follow the instructions of the bus driver or emergency personnel. Students become ineligible for bus, school bus transportation when their behavior is such to cause a decession on a school bus and, it should be distraction, but it's not, on a school bus, and when they observe, disobey state and local rules and regulations pertaining to pupil transportation. The school principal or the superintendent may suspend students from riding the bus." Alright, so that is their rules, their regulations, and the mission. Now, comes some of the information that I was given from the Hamlin County Board of Education as part of my records request. In my request, I had asked for a few, a few different things. One of them was how many Hillcrest students are currently on tier one, two, and three for tardies? Now, what I got back in response was that students are placed on tier one, two, and three, attention based on attendance and not tardies. So four tardies equals an absence. Alright, so remember that, so anytime that somebody is, has four tardies, it's a absence, so eight tardies is two absences, 12 is three, and it continues from there. So, their records for the attendance which are attached. Now I don't get, I have nothing that's attached in this, but what I do have is an A, B, and C to their answer on this paper. Tier one, okay, so tier one is the least amount of tardies. Seventeen people this year since the school has started are on tier one. Thirty are on tier two. Eleven are on tier three. Now, I'm assuming that that is accurate from this calendar school year. But I also requested, and I did not receive, I don't know if that was an oversight or if that was purposely, but my request was also for the 2018 and 2019 school year, and that is because there was no COVID issues in that school year, so I wanted to leave out the school year prior to um this school year, which they missed many months. So, I wanted to be fair, but I did not receive that information. So I will have to make that records request again and be able to actually see where it stands. But that seems for this year, like awfully lot of people are on tier thirteen, tier three. There's more people on tier thirty, I'm sorry, than tier two than there are combined on one and three. Twenty-eight on one and three combined, thirty on tier two. So that's a lot of people. My, also part of my request um was for the service records for bus 34. So let me show you the bus records for bus 34. Alright, so for bus 34 for the school year, I don't wanna leave nothing out here. Alright. Thirty-four. Thirty-four, 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 thirty-four. Thirty-four. Alright. So, these are gonna be in order from the most recent to the oldest. So, go ahead and get this in front of the camera so you can see this. Let it zoom in, alright, so this is vehicle work orders 16330 from February the 8th. So if you see on here, description of the work from February the 8th, um which, that's when the work order was, and it said the bus was in the garage, I guess, date entered 162020. We're not gonna get into all that, let's just worry about the description of the work. So they added antifreeze, red antifreeze, okay? And that was done February the 8th. Also, on February the 8th for bus 34, at the same time it says, and I'll show you this, just so that you see that I'm not here making nothing up or anything. Um, okay, maybe uh, alright, so this date here was the date that it was printed up, okay? So not the date of the service, um just I guess when it was actually maybe put in the computer and status completed? I don't know, I'm not gonna get into all that, that's kind of irrelevant um for what I'm trying to make as point. So let's go with this data over here, so January the 6th, they added red antifreeze at 136,000 miles. Bus 34 at 137,000 miles, they also added red antifreeze. Bus 34 at 137,000 miles again, they also added red antifreeze. Alright? Bus 34. Oh, this is the same one that they just gave me, so this is multiple copies, I don't see nothing different on that. Um, let's see, sixteen, six, six oh six. Alright, so now we've got work order sixteen, six oh six from 138,000 miles on bus 34. And they did back, seat backpans, silicone, they painted it uh in some foam. Okay? So, that's what they went ahead and they did. It says inspection repaired, repaired the seats. Then we have at 138,000 for bus 34, we have another oh, this is the same, no, this is different work order, just so you guys see that. Different work orders at the same time. And this one is for seat repair. And a cover. Alright, so we got two work orders from the same exact day. And this is for work order 16945. It doesn't say the bus, okay, so this is for the brakes. Alright, before I get to this, let's continue with bus 34, okay? And look, this is from way from 2007, okay? Way from 2007, I didn't even ask for 2007. I didn't even ask for that. I asked for recent stuff. And that's what they gave me, so obviously they ain't got really much, I guess um for 2007 as far as bus 34. So, back three years ago, we're gonna, we're gonna say three years ago, alright, um was the year, oh maybe that's the year of the bus. So maybe that's the year of the bus, nine, 2007, okay? So, here's our work order, alright, this is better. So, they did the air filter, replaced the bulb, a fuel filter, another fuel filter, oil and oil filter. So they change the oil at every 6,000 miles, okay? And then we got the adding of red antifreeze right there, and that was uh for work order seventeen, zero, nine, four, which I don't even think I was given that work order. No, so I wasn't even given this work order, alright? So you could see they added antifreeze again, that's like four times within, let's see how many miles it says on here, it does not. So within like 1,500 miles, they've added coolant four times, alright? Where's the coolant going? Coolant doesn't just disappear. There's a maintenance issue, and it's leaking, you know what happens when, when coolant leaks? Or any kind of fluid leaks, it builds up on the motor, and dirt builds up on the motor. Therefore, it, when something happens, it's so dirty, you can't find problems, it's hard to have maintenance. So, I don't know if they've pressure washed it, if they do, how often, or whatnot, but that's a maintenance problem right there. You're not supposed to just keep adding fluid, you're supposed to fix the problem. Alright, so, now these are for the other buses, or some other buses. If you watched my first video, we found a bunch of brake drums and brake shoes in a pile. Many of them were almost brand new, if not new. And I asked for the paperwork that went to all of those. There was probably, I don't know, maybe 10 sets there? And that's on the light side? So, you could see last year, alright, 1029, 2020, they inspected the bus and replaced the rear brakes, drums, and wiper blades, alright? So we're talking about three months ago. Now they have all those drums still piled up for three months without cleaning anything up? Um, I, I don't really buy that, alright? I don't buy that, nowhere on here under their inspection doesn't show any of their findings. It doesn't say that they tested um the thickness of any of the pads or the drums, it doesn't say that they checked the air pressure tires, doesn't say any of that for the 45-day inspection. I would hope that they would have all that written down so that if something happened in accident, they'd be able to give that information to somebody. Now we have another one, this one is from December of last year, December 1st. And it says, um, "Check the level of the transmission fluid, 6,000 miles. Description, performed CPM, this is a computer, and installed rear brakes and drums." Okay, so this is for bus 45. And um, you can see they also did an oil change, added antifreeze, red, um and did a little bit of greasing, it says grease here, so tube of grease. And, uh. It, all it says here is they checked the transmission breather. They inspected the suspension. They lubricated the suspension and they lubricated the kingpin. Doesn't say anything about their findings of their inspection. And you can see it. It's got a little staple mark. Let's see if this thing will focus. Um. Alright, so you can see it's got a little staple mark right there, right? But there's nothing attached to it. So. This is just what they gave me. Okay? All of these have had something stapled to them, but this is just the information they gave me. Right? They don't want to give me all of it because they would be proof. So bus seventy. Also. Um, December the first, uh, December twenty-first, so also in December. Had. PM service inspection, rear brakes and drums, two new steer tires. Okay, so nothing about the inspection is on here. Doesn't say, um, you know, that they gauged the brakes or the drums, doesn't say that they gauged the steer tires. To find out if they were, you know. Did they need to be changed or did they need to be changed month, a month ago? Or did they still have a little life on them and they just changed them? We'll never know that because their information isn't on here. But they, um, stoparm cable and the oil and grease and stop sign strobe light. Um, so all of that stuff was fixed and replaced. And then we've got bus seventy-five, long bus. And it's forty-five day inspection. Inspected the bus and reset the trans light. Replaced the front brakes and drums, changed external trans filter. Okay, and this is from November sixth. Alright? And it says that, uh, they replaced the front brakes, front drum. And Allison factory transmission filter. Okay, so. And their forty-five day inspection. Once again, nothing that they've inspection, no data, no nothing like that. Um. That's what you get. These are the same as what I've already shown you. They sent me some duplicate copies. So. Out of the, at least a minimum of ten full sets. Ten full sets of rotors and shoes back there. That were shown in that video. I only received. Four. Four work orders that state anything about brakes being changed and it's nothing recent. The most recent one is from December twenty-first of last year. So at a minimum. Those brake drums have been sitting there for about two months. Or at least being stored for two months. Alright, I find it extremely hard to believe. That these are from that, especially if they've been sitting out. Or stored that long. Um, the rust would be a little bit more than what was currently on there. So I don't know where the rest of these are. I have no idea. Are they doing service? Yeah, they seem to be. But I don't know too much more about what they're doing because they're not providing that. They're not providing any data of their inspections. So. Now back to. Their response. Get these out of the way. Alright. So we've got the response from Rodney Long. Who is the director. He's the guy that, uh, had me trespassed unlawfully from this property. And, uh. I'm not going to give any details now, but they do have some new signs up. Um. Look at these new signs. We'll go ahead and we'll actually pull on forward. Um. And I, I will read these to you. In a different location, which is right here down the street. So you can see they have authorized personnel only signs. Over there, they had one at the other gate. And they've got two over here. So. They've gone ahead and they've put authorized personnel signs up. And that is a, in a fenced in area, and that's what they needed. I, I don't know how long this building's been here for, right? But it's been wide open. Means anybody at any time could go in there. But you think that's something, they, all they've done is locked those buses. Let me show you these buses over here. These buses right here, they're still sitting out. Alright, so anybody can have access to these school buses. And I'm going to show you. Another place where they store school buses that anybody has access to the school buses. So it's not about safety. Okay, it's not about safety at all. It's about power. It's about the power. That the government wants to inflict. On the citizens. So they've got these over here. Posted, no trespassing. Authorized personnel only. They've got them up on this door over here. Authorized personnel only. This is the Hamlin County Maintenance Department of Education. Will come visit here on point. Um. So let me go ahead. And read you this, and then I'm, after I read you this, I'm going to pause this and I'm going to ride to another location, which is right down the street. And I'm going to show you the accessibility that school buses have. Even though they put these signs up over here to protect the buses that are here. Hey, for many years, they used to allow these bus drivers to take the buses home to their house or park them wherever they wanted to. So now, just now, they're starting to utilize a little bit of sense of safety. So. The service records for bus thirty-four, they've attached. Surface records that had the brakes replaced in, in the video from January twenty-sixth. Are attached. So you saw all those brakes. They gave me four work orders. The brakes have a wear indicator. My, my request was how often are they changed? Brakes have a wear indicator bar and they are replaced when the brakes reach this bar. I can tell you from experience of commercial trucks that I own. That take the same drum, same style as what was there. They, those brakes had a lot, a lot, a lot of life left in them. There's an adjuster on there, a slack adjuster. That needs to be adjusted. So. I feel most of those. Were not, had not reached that indicator. There was a lot of life. A lot of those looked brand new. So it says that the brake drums are measured on any drum over one hundred thou, one hundred twenty, uh, one hundred and twenty thousandths of an inch. Will be replaced. Now you saw that it showed in their inspections, but it didn't show. Any of them, what the measurement was, or that they even took a measurement. Alright, that stuff is supposed to be on these papers. That is part of their inspection. Maybe they decided to leave that out. Maybe that was what was on other parts. The cost three of a rear brake drum is a hundred and fifteen dollars for a box of two. The cost for the rear drums. Are two hundred dollars each. And the cost for the front brake shoes are ninety-five dollars each. And the cost for the front brake drums are a hundred and twenty-five dollars each. So you're looking at. About nine hundred dollars in material to replace them. So if they're not needing to be replaced, you're shooting out nine hundred bucks each time plus whatever the labor is. Another part of my request was the earlier start time at Hillcrest. And it says that it has not affected the bus schedules in any way. Now, I was told that it was for the scheduling of the buses. So apparently that is not what it is. Um. I had asked in regards to the no talking on the bus, their response was. Per board policy six dot three, oh, eight, the bus service is an extension of the classroom. And students are to conduct themselves on the bus in a manner consistent with the established standards for classroom behavior. Therefore, the driver can have rules of no talking. Okay, so I've already gone to Meadowview. I believe it was either last year or two years ago. Because the students were having a lot of no talking and silent lunches. So I went and then I spoke to Mr. Witt. And we had a discussion. And after Mr. Witt and I had a discussion, they no longer had silent lunches. From that date, at least not to my knowledge, and none that my son has ever came back and said, hey, there was a quiet lunch because I've asked him. Alright, so. The reason for the quiet lunches were because students were disrespectful, distracting, talking. Now, my point was you cannot. Discipline everybody as a whole. When you discipline everybody as a whole, there is actually no discipline being done to the person that committed those. There is. Everybody is being disciplined equally. And that's not right for the students that are not. In violation of any of those rules. He agreed. Now we're at the same thing here. You're saying nobody's allowed to talk. But the rules state that students are allowed to talk, just they have to be quiet, no profanity, no obscene language. So. Their number ten that they gave me back. To me is a crock of crap. Alright, she doesn't have that right to say that students are not allowed to talk. And I want anybody who has been on any bus that has not been allowed to talk. To comment. And I also want anybody that knows that their student has been allowed to talk on a bus to comment. These rules need to be enforced throughout the entire county, the entire district of the school board. Not pick and choose who has their rights violated and who does not. So I also wanted to know about the video recording on the bus. And if it's been sanitized. So the transportation department does not require video of the driver inspecting the bus or of the bus being sanitized. I would like to see that. I would like to know that it's been sanitized at all. Or at least thoroughly. Wouldn't you parents like to know that? We've been, you all have been wearing masks for almost a year now. A lot of it's been required mandate. Wouldn't you like to see that the bus driver is doing their job to sanitize? And wearing a mask while they're doing so? That's not available to us. I also asked. If the bus driver sanitized the bus in between pickups. So the way it works is. In the morning, the school, the, the bus will go and pick up the students and drop them off at their allowed in schools. Now after school, the school starts off at elementary school level. And the bus is supposed to be sanitized prior to that pickup. We don't have any records of that. Now, they go, they pick up the students from the elementary school and drop them off. Some students remain on the bus. And others are dropped off. The bus then goes to a middle school. And picks up those students from middle school. There is no sanitization of the bus. Between the pickup of the elementary school students and the pickup of the middle school students. Nor is there any sanitization between the middle school students and the high school students. So now if a student was sick in elementary school and sat in a seat. Now whomever sat in that same seat from middle school and high school has now been exposed to the virus. Aren't we wearing a mask? Or aren't you all wearing a mask all the time? The students are constantly wearing a mask at school since they've started. Even though there's times that they're six feet apart. But now you're cross contaminating. Alright, so one school is contaminating another school, which is contaminating another school. So the only school that is sanitized and sanitary is the very first pickup, the elementary school students. Now. If you don't see a problem with cross contamination, then don't call. Don't voice your opinion. But if you feel that the school board is slacking when it comes down to their bus transportation. And you feel that those students. Should be, one, allowed to talk on the bus because that is part of the rules. And two, that the school buses should be sanitized between the school pickups after school. Call, voice your concern. I've done all I can. I've got information and records. I've recorded this for you. To be able to see and gather this information instead of you needing to gather it yourself. And if you feel that they should be sanitizing or at least wiping it down, they pull, they pull up to the other school. Any seats that are vacant, they get wiped down. Either by the bus driver. Or sanitation wipes given to the students entering the bus so that they can wipe down their seat where they go and they sit down. I think that is how it should be handled. Either the bus driver does it. While the students are waiting to get onto the bus, shouldn't take a minute or two to run through and wipe it down. Or give wipes to the students and let them do it themselves. But some kind of sanitary issue. This issue needs to be addressed. I have another sanitary issue that I'm going to address, but I'm not going to address it in this video. I'm going to address it. In the next video that will be uploaded this evening. But right now, I am going to pause this video and we are going to take a short drive. To a different location and I want to show you school buses that are accessible to anybody at any time. And these buses are parked here whenever they are not on route. Which means after school, late at night, weekends. So we're going to pause this and we will be right back. Okay, so we've driven down the street. We are now. At East High School. So. You see these buses sitting here? Look, I mean, it's right there at the sidewalk. Okay? Anybody can drive on in here. There's. Nothing that's keeping anybody out or anything. As, I mean, as a matter of fact, the church right next door, they utilize this area on Sundays. Alright, you see all the cars over here, all that? So. You know, by putting those signs up over there at the highway department. You know, it's kind of more of a like, uh, hey, Tony, you're not coming back in here again. You know, you came in here once, you proved us, uh, you know, that we have no security. You proved that we don't sanitize our buses as much as we should. Um, you, you, you proved that, uh. We just, um, have materials laying around and we're not utilizing them. You've proven that our inspections aren't really inspections. They're just, hey, let's change them because we, you know, want something to do. Otherwise you would have given me some reports, some data, some information, and I haven't received any of that. So. Right here, you can see the buses. And this is just at this school. I'm sure there's more parked in other places and other locations. And the school. It's open to the public. It's open to the public, alright? Um, there's even a school that has disc golf at it. Um, I've, kids have played at the playgrounds after school hours and basketball and. You know, all different types of sports. So you're allowed on school property. Um, it, it is a little restricted when school is in session. But this is our property. We pay for this property. And as a matter of fact, the Hamlin County School Board. Gets the majority of all money spent and issued through, through Hamlin County. Is direct from the school board. There's a lot of um other waste that goes on just, other than just right here. What you're seeing with antifreeze. Being continuallylessly added. That was one school bus. I don't even know how many they have in the fleet. But could you imagine if they're doing that to half of them? Or just adding oil? Or just adding brake, well, wouldn't have brake fluid because it's got air brakes. Um, power steering fluid. Transmission fluid, all just leaking. Right? It's called maintenance. So I'm gonna end this video here. I am gonna go um right next door and. I'm gonna film another little segment real quick, just in regards to the, what I found, um. Sanitize waste, sanitization wise and waste wise. At the schools themselves. Okay, so be sure to watch that as soon as um you finish watching this one. Please subscribe to my channel. Please put a thumbs up on this video and hit that bell so you don't miss nothing. Have a good day.